Hi everybody, it's six fifty-nine, take your seats. Directors on the board, get off here please. Yeah, you got a lot to do, you're up here. It's a board, it's something we did. I have to get up here right here. I don't know who you mean.
He had a whole bunch of deputies, but he was just actually, he wasn't really a board member.
Oh wow. Is he okay?
Yeah, he's good.
Does anybody have the time?
It's seven o'clock.
Okay. You want to call them or you want me to?
I know my lane.
Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven o'clock, roll call, Vera Baker here. Cheryl Newton.
Here.
Jamie Baker.
Here.
All board members present? Um. Have to read the meetings from the previous election.
Travis, have you got a piece of this paper?
Somebody set one up here that's ordering us. Did everybody get one of these?
No, I didn't. Don't know if they're fucked or not. I don't know. I'm wondering.
Anything unhappy with Ms. Baker?
It had carpet and everything on it, because all metal carpet that it puts is going down.
That's nice.
So called up walls on it for his people. Oh, he put all of them doors up here on there.
Yeah. Nope, don't have them. Okay, we'll have to do it without reading the meetings. Okay, during our last meeting, we held an election, and myself, Jamie, and Cheryl were elected to the water board. And, um.
There's nobody else we were.
You can speak louder, it's an open meeting. Okay, that's pretty much all that happened, if I can remember right. The board of directors need to vote on who will be the president, vice president, and secretary of the board.
I'm gonna make Jamie for president.
Okay.
If we get through this, and I'll make you for secretary.
Okay, you have to make a motion?
I make a motion that Jamie's president and your secretary.
Okay, um, you make a motion that Jamie is president, who seconds it?
Somebody can second, just say second.
No, it has to be a board member who seconds the motion.
Can I say it?
No. Can't second your own motion.
And I can't second it, so it's a stall. It goes to the people. Am I right or wrong? If the board's locked, what do you do? The ten percent of the town should call the vote.
Looks like they're here, maybe even twenty percent.
Well, I mean, is that right or wrong?
If I could, if I could offer the board a suggestion. The, if y'all wanted to table officer election, um, for a time, I know your board training is in March, and they'll go over this in detail. That would be something you could do. We're gonna table official officer elections until that time, we'll share duties until then. In March, you'll get your official training, y'all will be then very clear on what you're each allowed to do, and so forth. Just an idea.
I second it.
Okay, so you second yourself as president?
I can't, can I?
That's the motion on the table.
I cannot.
Wait, then if the motion was declined till a later meeting?
It wasn't declined by the board members, it was a suggestion I could try. Somebody needs to make a motion, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, there you go.
Move it right along here. Been awhile since I've been in part manditory procedures.
Okay. We need to accept the resignations of Madeline Harrington, Coltrane Thornburg, and Cody Prince.
Do we have the resignation?
I have resignations with me.
Did they sign it and give it to us?
If they want to sign now.
They didn't come to me and tell me, or anybody I know that they resigned. I don't know that.
As far as Madeline goes, all I know is.
She did tell me, tell me she resigned and robbed stuff.
Okay, told me she resigned too.
And she reported everybody I talked to along the way she did.
But the bank won't accept that. The bank has to have.
We can't go forward with it anyway till we decide them to.
The bank will only accept an official resignation signed and notarized by Madeline Harrington, or they will not accept anyone else as the bookkeeper. This has to be done a certain way.
We realize that.
There's a process and a procedure for this to even be legal. And if we violate that, um.
Well, you're saying Coltrane Cody resigned, and we got approved. They didn't come to me and tell me. Did they tell anybody of the new board?
I haven't heard anything.
So, what did we say?
They're not talking to me at all, so.
I don't know what to say.
This is gonna have to be settled one way or another.
I understand that.
I mean, I've talked to you, Travis, and Jamie, all three the same day when I pitched the last water leak. So, I mean.
I'm good with that, but I haven't seen a resignation, hasn't been told you resigned.
What I'm saying.
The pickup was turned in, Coltrane never told me.
I found out that I resigned on Facebook, I messaged her and told her I didn't. I mean, black and white, I can pull it back up and move shit.
If I may, I'll propose another, another suggestion for this contingency. Everyone who was employed by the previous board stays employed on a probationary basis for sixty days.
Okay.
If.
Not board.
I'm sorry.
Not board, that wasn't the board member that we're talking about, it was operator and helper.
Correct, hired by the previous board, then they stay employed on a probationary basis for sixty days. At which time, you guys have received your training, I know you're seeking legal counsel, so you'll be able to check in with a lawyer in that time. Find out, I know Vera has raised some questions about legality of different things. So counsel will be able to be obtained. The employees in the meantime have some security, those who wish to remain, if folks wish to resign. Apparently, there needs to be some changing of hands with the clerk position, that's okay. But those who wish to remain employed would remain so. After sixty days, you can, you can review the performance of those employees and decide if you, as the new board, wish to retain. That would give you some opportunity to gather your feet under you, get all the documents together, all that.
I've got something to add.
Absolutely.
My understanding, there one with license has already stepped down, through DQ, correct? How does that work?
We've had some conversations with DQ, I believe all, I believe Vera, yourself and I, all have spoken with him. You guys are good from the DQ perspective, DQ's okay with letting, kind of dust settle.
Can they run on my license, is what I'm asking.
Yes.
Cause Phillip don't move back in from what I've told, I don't know, he didn't tell me that, I hadn't talked to him.
Correct.
I remember as DQ, what they told me.
Per DQ, their license may suffice for the system, for the time being.
Well, that's what I wanted.
Yes, sir.
To be understood, I mean, that's all I was worried about before we did get hung up with no license and him default again.
Absolutely.
Like when I started.
Cody, I understand you're on the first year license, the training license, so you may work under Jamie's, per DQ, during this interim period where we're really letting the dust settle and figuring out what's gonna happen next.
Well, there was such a turnover, nobody knows nothing.
Copy that, it would be good to take sixty days just to really get our feet over ourselves, get training, get legal counsel.
I don't know.
Be good though. Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the motion?
Sixty days for them to stay aboard if they choose.
Second.
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry.
Not if they choose, if the board decides to keep them.
So it's sixty days probation, as system operators? Okay.
Move this out, I'm sorry.
Because we don't have no reservation papers to go on.
My burden with them, they're concerned.
It's all just hearsay, she said, this said.
Yeah, that's all we got right now.
Well, I don't wanna operate that way.
I had to put it on here so we can discuss it.
I know, but I want it plain, the people knows what we're doing, why we're doing it.
That's important, I second that.
It's the only way we're going forward.
Okay, number six.
And for it to be, uh, discussed and step, and approved by the board before it's put on Facebook or social media, to know what you're talking about.
I second that. Did I do that?
I really hope we don't promote it right now.
I don't think that a board member should be able to, to, uh, put stuff on social media.
It's my opinion.
I'm a firm believer in transparency, and I feel like everybody needs to know what's going on.
Yeah, but you're not posting.
We had so much chaos, this thing just.
You are creating chaos, what we are trying to get out of, that's the whole thing. You know, we need to turn a whole leaf, instead of this, uh, nitpicking between everybody and the town separating. You know, you, you always say you wanna.
If you want to.
Hold up, hold up, you got your say, I got my say.
I'm resigned right now.
Well, we're resigned, because you're not good for the water company. You have been on here for a week, and you have done nothing but put negativity and chaos back in this. The whole thing, that this whole town, just like with the township when they did it. You're doing the same thing Mike Johnson did. Besides, you're doing it to our water company.
I'm tired of working for the water company.
If you was tired, and you really wanted on this board to make a difference, you wouldn't have started out, Vera, from day one posting things of. That wasn't even settled, was not true, and playing games with other deal. We all growed up together, who cares? I don't care if none of you like me. I'm not mean to anybody. And I was on the board for twenty something years. And there is no sense in this. You know, you saying bull crap about other people playing games with the ex-board, they're playing games with you. It makes our town a joke, it makes our board a joke, it makes everything that we're working to change a freaking joke. So how can you sit there all pompous and act like you care about what happened to this water company? Vera, you said you say I had mine.
I agree with you. If I didn't care, I wouldn't be here.
No, you're there to start the crack. If you really believe that, Vera, why did you start out, before you even had the first formal meeting, doing your same stuff? You would've been on Facebook saying, come and join, uh, the meeting, and let's join together and make our community better. You know what this is all about, I don't care who likes me, who's got the job, who kisses who afterwards. You know what, the, the main reason we're here is the quality of our water, that we have to drink.
Second that.
And we have to survive, we have to live on, our children do, our grandchildren, our, I mean, for years and years.
If you're concerned with the water quality, why has it sucked for the last thirty years?
It hasn't sucked.
You've been on the board for six years, and our water quality is the worst.
Proven.
We have really bad water quality.
Proven, did, did you take DQ test, are you, are you over all that?
It's always been good enough for DQ.
Who drinks the water in this town?
I do.
I did, babe.
I do.
Every day.
I'd drink the water in any town.
Can. Our's bigger than water towns. It's right here.
Can you answer the question, I, can you answer the question? Why are you already trying to destroy the water company before it gets started on social media?
I'm not trying to destroy it. This thing has to be rebuilt.
Vera, let me tell you something. You knew that you and Jamie couldn't have any contact. You knew, hold up.
Now, why did he come over to my house in the middle of the fucking night?
Hey, hey.
No. When y'all was told that you could not speak anymore about what goes on here.
I'm gonna have to resign. I need my penis.
When, when, when you was told.
I'm tired of being berated by this woman.
No, you was told.
He came out and walked out the night twice to have illegal meetings, discussions.
No, y'all was trying to figure out how to.
Have a board approval.
Well, how he was gonna, uh, get part, and you gotta have to, gotta get it going. And then when y'all was told y'all couldn't speak no more. And I, I, Travis and them told y'all that y'all would, you bring the papers tonight. That he, he would read the meters.
I'm gonna leave them.
He would read the meters when he got the formal paperwork.
Everything.
You drive up to our house, he tells you he can't accept them papers until the meeting, and you act like a two-year-old. And squall out all over Bradley.
The meters need to be read, who's gonna read the meters?
The meters are not important here.
I read my own at eleven o'clock on the twenty-fifth.
Let me ask the people this question.
You want my numbers? I got them, they're written down.
Well, how can you read the meters when you hadn't been in this meeting right now to get the paperwork from the last reading? You can't go forward without something going.
I like having my last month's.
Why have my dues with this everybody?
Well, I can't.
Yeah, but nobody's ever handed over the book, you know, where the numbers are, and to read. You're just supposed to take off with your little skip down through town and know everybody's name, meter number, and their numbers are your, are your refusing to do something.
I'd like to interject here, if I can, everybody, I don't know anyone in this room, recognize a few faces. But I would really appreciate, since I don't know anything what's going on, if we can keep this at a civil, uh, kinda like black and white kinda conversation, so I can understand. Cause I, I don't know personalities or, or stories.
Well, I was gonna bring up, we do a minimum, until we get control of the reading, and then we go forward from there, but that's my opinion.
Is that feasible?
We're allowed two a year.
Okay.
Two min, two minimum readings, without reading a meter.
I don't have the authority to do the billing. I don't have the legal authority to do it.
Then we have all the paperwork to do it.
It's right in there, and I'm leaving.
Well, I haven't seen it, nobody has seen it on the board. We don't know what's there in that box.
Well, you're gonna have to dig into it.
Yes, that's part of this meeting.
Okay.
To get the paperwork, we need to go forward.
A few comments, folks. First of all, RWA promotes transparency of communication, and I understand that there's a lot of challenging conversations that need to be had. Often, conflict delayed is conflict amplified, so sometimes hard conversations must be had, I understand that. I would ask that in this, up until everybody's trained, there, there's gonna be some, some new board member behavior, and I, I'd say that's, you know, that's alright, that's healthy, that's part of a new board. The, as for the, the issue, I would suggest that you guys elect interim treasurer and president for sixty days. And that, and then at sixty days, you make a judgment call there too. That would be my advice on, on how to handle that business, and get in, and really get the meter reading under control, get, get everything under control in that way. That would be my suggestion on, on that side of things.
You can remember, me and you talked about that, I don't know everybody's name on the meters, so how can you go out and read a meter when you don't know whose meter you're reading?
If a, if a survey needs to be done, if postcards need to be left on doors, if a, a survey of the system meters need to be done. We can, we can handle the operational side, as long as we have some framework here to work with, that we can handle the rest of it.
But that's what this meeting is about.
Yes, sir.
And I'm good with that. And I'm ready to proceed in any way y'all see fit.
Okay, number six, announce who will take over the duties of operator and bookkeeper until competent replacements can be hired.
Is that between the board or the people?
It's between the board.
Are we just gonna have to table everything for two months?
Yeah, there may be more action available like next month, but for now, I would work through, get some pieces in order. Once you guys have everything in order, you'll be able to present a clear message together to the people, and make more informed decisions yourselves. That's how I would, again, get your feet under you and then move forward.
That's a good suggestion.
We're a group like that.
Y'all doing fine, y'all running board, y'all doing fine.
Table number six until, uh, four weeks, a month?
I would suggest interim, I would suggest interim be elected, pick someone, like among the board, to handle those duties in the interim. And then make a final decision in sixty days.
Well, I ask, is that our decision, or is it still part of the membership?
Uh, you guys are the executive board, unless there's something else in the Bible that I'm familiar with.
Well, y'all would just locked up because nobody would make the motion.
My understanding is you could second that earlier, what I would prefer.
I ask, can I second the motion to be there?
My understanding is yes, and a board is free.
Well, I don't know that.
Understood, well, the next sixty days, it may be rough, but we'll get there. Your training's coming, y'all will go to, you'll receive some full training right here in Bradley. We're bringing down a board trainer, and he'll walk you through all of your duties. So for the first sixty days, it's best to be kind of quiet on the final decisions.
I agree.
It'll, it'll be good, collect some information and move forward. Legal counsel would be really good, we'll, we'll get some pieces around you to support you, and then.
One of the best has been on the board before.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. And that's okay, that's allowed, it's, it's part of the process.
Yeah.
Somebody make a motion.
Motion?
I motion, we're gone. Check, put that aside for sixty days, what do you want it?
Is this the, uh, is this.
So we're not gonna do billing for sixty days?
Is this, uh, is this item six? Am I understanding it right? Item six. What I would suggest, we've already discussed keeping operators on for sixty days. So the operational staff will be divided with the operators who wish to enter that probationary period, supported by Jamie's license, as per DQ. The bookkeeper duties, if one of you wishes, I know Vera, you expressed an interest, uh, in that, during that sixty day period, the bookkeeper duties could be assigned to you. I'd, I'd say an interim basis, to let y'all get your feet under you, but you could take those duties for sixty days. And with the, I mean, other options available after sixty days, but that would establish some framework today to move forward.
That's a good suggestion, can I second it?
Yeah, go make a motion.
I make a motion to second what he said.
No, you have to make a motion to. Appoint. One of us to be the bookkeeper. That's the motion, but you have to say it.
You seem to have all this pretty well under control and, and understanding.
You have to be computer literate to do all of this, it's all on computer.
Are you a computer literate? I'm not computer literate.
Aren't you a board member, can you not make the motion, instead of trying to tell everybody else what to say? You're a board member.
Yeah, can you make a motion? I'll second it. I'm good at that.
Crayons and construction paper.
I don't wanna get into the habit of making motions to appoint myself and then.
I made the motion to appoint yourself.
When there's only three people, like.
If you don't wanna make the motions, get off the board.
For me to be president, it locked up, so.
Ah. Square peg, round hole.
Bigger hammer.
There's a folder in Madeline's things of everybody's water meter numbers, and it's for each month, if you'll give it to the operators, they can go read the meters.
I already tried. He blew up at me, and told me to get the hell out of here, and I took off, and, really, I've got the.
There's a folder, get the folder to the operators and let them read the meters.
I second that.
I motion to give them.
I've got it right here, that's all I need.
It is your right, as a meter holder, to express yourself, as this open, greedy, dark thing that we don't wanna break, my son. Go say what you think.
Got a lot of good things to say, put them in perspective.
So.
Y'all can't hang on you won't tell about me, but I went, I was told to stop communicating, and that's what I done.
This is now the appropriate venue to, to have those conversations, this is open meeting. Vera, nothing would be out of line with you saying, I nominate myself to be the bookkeeper for the next sixty days, to be reevaluated by the board at that time, y'all can make an additional judgment. Nothing would be out of line with that language, to my knowledge, there, we're working through this one thing at a time. We'll get some legal counsel in the next sixty days, and if this is rough the first time, we'll get it right the next time, that'll be alright.
I second.
I'm sorry. Alright, I nominate myself to be the bookkeeper for the interim for sixty days. Somebody has to second that.
Somebody seconds it. Sorry, I second it.
Roll call.
Roll call?
Final vote.
You then, with each vote, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Alright, yes. Okay, so I'm gonna be the bookkeeper for sixty days, and I would like to advertise that position, I'd like to open it up for somebody, cause I don't wanna do this further.
Can I ask why, you wanna advertise it?
To make it fair for everybody who wants to apply for the position of bookkeeper for the world water district.
I, I just didn't know why.
I'm not comfortable with appointing people, because it gets into cronyism, and I'm trying to get away from that. I don't like cronyism on these boards.
Can we.
Or be put in that word?
Travis, can we hire the bookkeepers, that left up to the members? It has to be voted through the members, right, or wrong?
As the executive body, y'all are enabled to, to do these things under the review of the board, you know, or, I'm sorry, the members.
Shouldn't they have a say?
Yeah, you're welcome to petition the, the members for suggestions or anything like that, but you guys are currently the executive board.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get understanding, it's all I'm trying to do.
Absolutely. We'll get that training in March, and by the way, the training in March is publicly accessible, folks. If y'all would like to attend the board training and understand more about this, it's a public meeting, y'all, feel free to come and attend if you would like to.
It is March eighth, so he told me, you gotta go on, he told me, actually they need to go on his, the website, and be counted for.
Next time I come to meeting, I'll bring anything.
Travis, when in March, we'll let meeting take place.
I'm sorry?
When in March, we'll let meeting.
March eighth.
March eighth.
March eighth.
So it'll be a Saturday, it'll be an eight-hour class.
Well, my birthday, I, well, I don't predict what day it was, gonna have weddings set it up.
There you go.
Well, then we should have cake.
That girl's love cake.
Okay, number seven, the board of directors will vote to add the new president and secretary to the accounts at the First National Bank of Alex. We've already tabled whoever we're gonna choose who, the, what roles each of us is going to play, so I make a motion that we table this one as well.
Second.
Didn't you suggest that you have appointed interim president, so you can get the banking accounts open back up?
You have to pay the operators.
Didn't, didn't, yeah, didn't, but didn't the gentleman from DQ recommend, suggest that we, you appoint a interim president for the next sixty days?
We are not doing nothing till that happens, because what can you do?
We are not doing nothing till that happens, because what can you do?
If you have to stay away down or no account, you-
We ain't getting nothing.
No, what they're saying is where she's gonna play a part as a bookkeeper, secretary, whatever, upon, for a professional pay of sixty days, you can also be the president for that sixty days until they do it, and then we can get the financial things fixed.
Well, until somebody decided we can't go nowhere.
If you wanted to revisit item four and elect a interim president, secretary, get on the bank accounts, so business may be conducted, meters may be read. I, I do think that would be a wise move.
Well, it has to be done, and we have to come up with a meeting from the last meeting to see if we can get there. There's a lot of stuff to do.
I would suggest revisit the item four and, and those things be actioned, so that y'all can get things in hand. That would be wise.
You can nominate yourself and then she can section it.
I just called him a friend. Just say I nominate myself president.
You can ask questions. You're wise enough to know what you don't know. That's a lot further than-
And that's why I might even ask questions.
I put you ahead of a lot of you.
I was gonna, you said I was a letter opener, 'cause I brought the bills.
Find the stick and whittle it.
I hear a truck driver. Leave that alone.
I'm not a truck driver anymore.
I nominated her son, so can you not nominate yourself?
That's what Victor said.
Yeah, go for it there. I'll second you.
I'll nominate myself as president.
Somebody has to second it.
I will second that.
Hey, we may just-
Well, that's the only way we can move forward with the bank or anything else.
And we're not hurting anybody's student. Whatever, whatever those matter anyway. I see a hand in the back. Maybe we take pause to recognize the hand in the back.
What's the issue with the, the last election minutes? Is that what the problem is?
We haven't found them, and the bank won't allow us to use the video.
There is a house. Posted them onto the internet, if, you know-
Which part? The scribbled out- The part I read is all mountainous.
The actual minutes or the scribbled out paper that Frankie wrote?
That don't mean nothing to the bank.
My cam, my phone's over there.
It don't have remains or anything on it, and it has to be all that. Well, I went to bank and asked a question.
I know all about the meeting in it, but I know all about it.
But we can't find it.
Well, the secretary, the new secretary can rewrite the minutes.
I'm not gonna do that. Is it pretty long?
I can type it up. If, if that's what you're saying, I can type it up and then have Frankie sign the old minutes, but I think she already went to the bank and signed them, 'cause I brought the minutes to the bank.
Yeah, I believe that she went over and signed something for then for you all to go over and then-
Yeah, but they're also waiting for the minutes from this meeting, uh, determining who the president and the secretary are going to be, so they'll know who to put on the account.
Well, then that'll probably be all you have to do.
It's, there's a certain procedure that we have to follow.
Yeah, we've done that, right?
I'm gonna run it about, what, four times? I know all about the procedure.
Okay.
Um, I need to nominate the secretary. So I'm gonna nominate myself the secretary. I need a second. I need a second.
I second it.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
You have to vote. Here, there, yea. That's the one I was looking for.
Ain't the secretary supposed to call the name, and we say yes or no?
Sure.
Oh, my goodness. Yes?
Jamie?
Here.
Yes.
Yes, whatever you wanna get.
Yes.
There, yes.
Barry, you think you wanna stand right?
Not yet.
But she passes.
Okay, what's next?
You didn't do that when you elected Jamie.
Do what?
There's too much going on. There's just a lot of-
Calling the order, so why don't you make that official?
We can do it again.
I know maybe it's official that Jamie is going to be the interim president.
Well, if everything needs to be official, it's official.
You're right.
Roll call for Jamie as president. Cheryl?
I second it. What, what is it?
Say yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
There, yes. Motion passes. Okay, now it's official.
All right. Next.
It's not easy, is it, being up there?
I never said it was easy.
I'm gonna beat you, Cheryl. That's why I called him in, 'cause he knows more than we do.
Yeah. The whole job's not easy.
The board of directors will discuss and vote to retain our accounts with the First National Bank and Trust in Alex. The bank in Alex is going to close, and they're transferring their accounts and their people to banks in Blanchard and Chickasha. And, um, I need to know if we're gonna stay with this bank.
Is that a decision that has to be made now or the next board meeting?
Didn't the last board vote to move to Lindsey?
Yes. But this is the new board, so I wanna understand how we can do it.
Mr. Mika, I do know for a fact that the First National Bank and Trust in Alex, Oklahoma is closing on April fourth, so it, you would have to make a decision fairly quickly, because-
I understand that, but I wanna understand if we can do it tonight or what? 'Cause I was told this meeting is to get appointed, not make all decisions. I vote for it to stay with the First National, what I recommend.
But you're gonna drive twenty miles instead of seven miles.
Yes, but they have been taking care of this business for how many years? They know the ins and outs of this real water.
The Elic, the Elic Bank does, the Chickasha Bank may not.
Who do you think is over the Elic Bank?
I realize that, but they're, they're not the ones taking care of your account.
You'd be surprised. Call Chickasha Bank, ask them what they know about real water in Bradley.
Does Rush Springs Bank, or does it have the same represent?
It's closed. It's closing.
It's closing too.
Surreal's closing. Chickasha is the mother of all of them. And there's, how many banks in Chickasha?
Well, can't y'all just stay on this bank for sixty days interim trial, get my feet wet thing?
Well, actually, we have to present it to them to move our paperwork wherever. But we have to get through this before anybody can say anything, and if this is prolonged long enough, the bank closes, what do we do?
Is Lindsey, is the Lindsey bank, uh, First National Bank gonna stay open?
They're not First National no more.
Oh, that's correct.
They're wrong by God. I just say we stay with who's been taking care of it. That's my personal opinion. Y'all vote however, y'all see fit. At this point, I don't see involving a stranger in on this.
Well, since we have a couple of months to get our feet wet and get our heads on straight.
Yeah, we can, um-
Stay where we're at.
We can stay with the First National Bank and Trust.
But we're gonna have another meeting before the bank closes, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
All that don't have to be discussed tonight.
Stay with them for now, until we get this new administration established.
We need to get control of the bank account before we do a judgment.
Right. But now that we have a president and a secretary, we can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
So we stay where we're at.
If the legal paperwork and everything works out with them-
Motion that we stay where we're at for the sixty days?
I second it, but I don't know when exactly the day. I ain't gonna say sixty days, 'cause I don't know. I ain't counted up when they're actually closing for sixty days.
Man, you just table, y'all just need to table it till the next meeting, which is-
Monday? Monday?
It's the tenth. It's my understanding it's the next meeting.
February tenth is the next regular meeting.
We love this because of that meeting. As long as we can get the account opened back is the most important one, so we can do something.
Everything will have to be done tonight. Just get it rolling again.
Right on. I'm glad we got a good set of folks to get that done with.
Well, we haven't even seen anything about the bank, or I haven't.
Well, we'll find out. We have, we have a week to get her done.
Yep.
And right now it's tabled. Is that what we nominated? You voted on?
Nobody nominated and voted anything.
Well-
I vote that we table the movement of the bank at this period.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table.
Yes.
I second it.
Roll call. Cheryl?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
There, yes. All right.
I don't know how we would even present, uh, the bank in Lindsey when we ain't in control of the bank.
Right.
I don't know how that works, honestly. I think it'd be just our next watchnet.
What? Where, where, where's they gonna move it to?
They was gonna move it to American Exchange, is what they voted.
I know the one-
'Cause I get one to drive to Chickasha.
Well, I know the new one. They're not taking new accounts until April.
Yep.
That's what I was told. So I, I forgot where they-
The water companies always think they're in late.
Yeah.
Even if it does move, they still have records and they still are pointing with our company.
Yeah. I'm not changing mine.
I'm not changing mine. I'm just leaving it at Chickasha.
I'm in Chickasha almost weekly, sometimes daily, so having it in Chickasha does not bother me at all.
It ain't that much different. Seven miles in Lindsey, sixteen miles Chickasha.
Okay, we're done with that one?
I think, I think for right now, you need to decide on that, try to get your paperwork, and get up there, get the signatures y'all want on it, so you can pay the bills and you can pay the employees. I think that's what y'all need to try to sell.
All I'm trying to do is get the bank to step in.
All right. Number ten. The board of directors will discuss and vote to issue a purchase card to the operator. Um, I'm gonna make a motion we tabled out.
Well, can I explain what it's about?
Sure.
I brought, you can ask Travis. I've been told all along there's R and B allowance for the operator, 'cause if you as one of the check signers go on vacation, I go on vacation, you're crippled unless you have two people to sign a check, and it's Saturday, there is no place to open our account. We have no way to buy parts. It cripples us.
The issue I have is you being both the president and the operator on the account.
Well, here's the deal. If we can afford to put a hundred dollars in there, but there's a cap at five hundred for the operator. It can't go over five hundred dollars. Every transaction's made is straight to the bank recorded, 'cause it is a separate card and separate account.
But you being the president, giving yourself a debit card as the operator-
Will you use a debit card and be in two people?
Actually-
Well, that's how it's always been.
I'm not being paid to be bookkeeper. You're being paid to be the operator.
No, I'm not. Your faults represented all the way. The only way I could do it with DAQ going for it, I do not accept money. And that's been through, all through this. I do not accept no money. I cannot, as long as I'm on the board.
I'd like to clarify just a couple points. Uh, Jamie is an unpaid reserve operator right now. He's, his primary duty is that of interim chairman, and that'll be revisited in sixty days. Uh, but he is, he is not the operator. Cody is the operator currently. Now, as a licensed water operator, you may assist him and, you know, so forth with leaks and that kind of unpaid. If those relationship dynamics were to change, if Jamie were to resign from the board and become an operator again, and a new board would step up, that would eliminate the conflict of interest you're talking about. If there's, there is utility in operators having a card that is monitored and that they have to speak for at the meeting. For example, if Cody was out in lots and parts, he'd be expected to report to the board on, on his receipts, keep his receipts, all that kinda stuff.
There's been multiple times that we've had to fix a leak, that I've had to swap my own card to buy parts, because we don't have an account with the people that have the part that I need to get the water back.
But now I've done that. He has bought parts for me, 'cause I could get a whole card or a bag of them.
Yes, I, I would suggest that the financials need thoroughly reviewed before we issue a new sort of spending account. Uh, this would be a good candidate, I believe, to table for the time being. It'd be a good conversation to have later, but table for now.
I just asked a question at the bank if it could be done, 'cause I've been told all the time I operated, it couldn't be done.
Certainly. Research is good, gather information, but I, I would table this for now. Uh, but as Cody mentioned, it, it is a useful tool.
I agree with the membership, and I move to table number ten.
I second it.
Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Aye.
Jamie?
Here.
You have to say yes or no?
Yes.
There, yes. Motion passes. Out of this table.
That wasn't what I was actually here for, to get that card done. I wanted to know how you could do it. That was the question I asked at the bank, can it be done?
Well, it can be done, but it's something that we have to keep an eye on.
Kinda, but that's why I won't limit it to, we agreed to limit it to a hundred dollars, fifty dollars. There needs to be one spot and a cap.
Interjection.
Well, you can't just take the whole deal and run, or anything else. It's still, you know, whatever we decide on, how much money can be in that account, get them more.
So we stay old school where if we can't get what we need somewhere, we just go, well, we can't fix that leak today, 'cause we just can't afford it.
I understand. I've been there.
I wanna upgrade.
Or we have some people buy their own stuff like them, they had to buy their own meter house because the water company couldn't afford them.
I wanna upgrade to a digital system and get on a car system, but we have to do this. There's a certain procedure we have to follow. We can't just snap our fingers and do everything all at once. Okay, out of number eleven. The board of directors will discuss and vote to issue a gas card to the operator for the real water district truck.
I'm for it.
I put a lot of my own money in that truck.
And you know why I'm for it? I'll explain. If we do it at Sinclair, you're under camera. It is an online account. You can check it anytime you prefer. And eight to four, you can contact them ladies, and they'll show you what the operator done.
Just writing a check. It is very hard to go from house to house to get the check signed, and then find a gas station that will take the check.
Yep, there's only two in Lindsey.
It would just seem easier for me to put my own money in the truck.
Yes, a couple of comments towards a gas card. If, uh, so our trucks, we use a gas card. We use fuel in this case. We have to record our mileage.
Yes.
Uh, there's a lot of record keeping I'd like to encourage and foster, uh, moving forward, so that everything's kept lineup on line, precept upon precept. But if a gas card is issued, the operator needs to record his, uh, his mileage each time. That needs to be-
Have a mileage log.
I'm sorry.
Have a mileage log.
Yep.
A mileage log.
Yes, sir, a mileage log. I apologize. Yes, sir, a mileage log.
I move that we get a, a, uh, like, a log book. Not, not a log book, like I drove for two hours, like I always have to have, but a log book for-
A fuel log.
Yes, a fuel log, so you can write down mileage or make any notation remarks, so that we'll all know if we're, we got a tire with a knot on it, or we got a hose that's leaking in the room, and that way we got a log of the health of the truck.
I did that whole underdosing. Yeah, I've got, I, uh, keep track of everything.
And if they wanna discuss this, we can put a limit, weekly limit, on the fuel. They choose that, or whatever. I mean, but it can't be closed, all of that. If they run over it, we have permission to go, go home.
I have a question. This was kinda back up on ten. It never, uh, being in parts sometimes and working with, with stuff like this, I've recognized that in fixing repairs, I believe I caught a little bit of it, you can't necessarily get it fixed for a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars. You have to have, like you said, five hundred dollars as a basic.
Yeah, but a major repair.
But, where it needs to clear, but have a limit where, 'cause they're gonna run more sometimes to get parts.
So the major repair has to go through the board, 'cause it is emergency fix. I'm talking about everyday natural occurrences where you fix a three-quarter inch line, that stuff. I'm not talking about nothing that involves emergency management or nothing like that, where it takes a thousand dollars.
I withdraw my interruption. Thank you.
Well, I'm, the only reason I know I run it, you know, for two years, I understand a lot of how it works.
There's several parts that they can buy down there at the Lumber Yard, and there is a charge account there.
Yes, and there is one at Dutton's. But what do you do on Saturday when both of them's closed?
Well, he's up until twelve thirty.
Dutton's is. Lumber Yard ain't no more.
Lumber Yard too.
Did they change it back? I don't know. They was closing on Saturday.
It does happen to be a certain amount of parts that we use on a normal basis. It does happen to be a certain amount of parts that we use on a normal basis.
We need to build a part storage for that part. We need to have a little bit of pipe on hand, stored right.
I mean, I do my garage for my own.
Part of the deal is, is there's not a lot of funds, that's what everybody doesn't understand, when you start giving credit cards. And all this expense accounts, what money is that coming from?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Well, there's supposed to be an operator's account that's never existed, it's.
That's cause the money's not there.
But if you can't keep the water on. We're gonna drill wells and this is all not.
Credit card and make monthly payments on it.
We have two, we have brand new wells right now, cause we have.
No, the people, they're gonna go back to individual wells, if the wa- water district cannot keep the water on.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, we've gotta do something.
How have we handled it in the past? They produced a check and paid for it.
Mm-hmm.
You're not in a bad way right now with having your water fixed, everything's been going fine and smooth.
Well, good.
That's why I got, that's why I keep, uh, water and I have to keep the other one powered to hit a property with a well on it too.
Let's move on from this, cause we are facing a water leak on a six inch, and it can't be fixed at this point. I'm aware of it, I don't know if Cody seen it, but I found it yesterday. Somebody has drove a truck off when we went to fix Ricky's leak with dual wheels. And I'm pretty sure that line's leaking, cause I see water moving, running all the way down the hill.
That's his trash truck.
Is his trash truck running it over, but their washer and dryer also runs down that hill?
Yes.
Yes, but I'm talking about, there's a clear trail all the way to Peanut's house through the Tin Horn, and it only starts on the north side of the Tin Horn.
No, their drain has always run down that hill, but that's what I thought broke his water meter, was him parking his trash truck on top of it.
I can't say it was the trash truck running to pick our trash up or Ricky, cause I don't know. I just know there're dual wheels over it, don't know what done it.
But he's not the only trash truck that goes up there either, Wave Connections does, and there he gets.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but it could've been any truck driver, anywhere done it, I didn't see it, and it ain't on camera. I'm just letting y'all be aware, there is a leak as far as I know, on the six inch. But till we get through this, we can't even work on it, cause we have no way.
Mm-hmm.
Have no equipment, no parts.
It sounds.
Go ahead.
It sounds like there's interest in a gas card or an operator card pending financial viability.
Right.
Is, is there money to be spent?
Right.
And we need to look at those finances first.
Yes, ma'am, uh, I'd agree with that, uh, also accountability mechanisms.
Yeah.
Uh, we discussed a bit, like employee handbook, the beginning of some policies, how these things should be handled. Uh, I would suggest that this be put off, if not, to next meeting, maybe meeting after next. In which case, y'all can, and I would add a suggestion in the minutes, that y'all will gather, uh, information on how to do these things, right? What would be exact policies on how a card would be implemented, one for gas and one for the operator? That gives you time to look at all your finances and make an informed decision.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table number ten?
Second.
I second.
Alright.
But it's what I brought up before, when I was operating. Did y'all decide at the board, how much can go by?
Jamie?
Seconding.
Second.
Yes or no?
Thirty, yes.
Alright, very yes, special passes. Item out of this table. Item eleven, the board of directors will discuss, oh, I, one item twelve, I guess. Oh, crap.
It's been a long time.
Is it?
Discuss and vote.
Okay, we talked about the purchase card.
Y'all put that on the shelf.
Gas card to the operator, okay, okay, it is number twelve.
That was, that was put aside.
Right. Yeah, okay, so. Number twelve. The board of discuss, the board of directors will discuss and vote on requesting a cooperative agreement. From the town board of trustees for the use of the office in the community building. For conducting rural water district business and the use of the maintenance barn to store old rural water district records.
I say no, the records don't need to go in that barn, cause they're not secured. And that is open, there is nowhere to put the, them papers.
Papers don't go in a barn, do you? It's that shed.
Well, the problem I have is all of these papers and records being stored in somebody's private residence. And they're uninsured, they're not digitized, uh, what happens if there's a fire, all of our records burn up? Same thing in that barn.
They same thing with the barn.
But what if somebody turns water loose in there and it's sitting on the floor in the barn? That's what I'm getting at, they're not secured.
I can't have all this stuff in my house.
What about that, what about that office space that was, that's in front of the?
It is the town.
Yes, town.
I get that.
But I.
She's talking about that shit on there.
Yeah, this here or, or the.
Well, we modify this, but it's not an office anymore, that is, that's a library.
Okay.
It's two total separate entities, we cannot use that paperwork.
My suggestion was, look at the finances and see if we can buy a temporary portable building and find a place. Send it, paperwork in it, lock it.
It's hot, I can't breathe.
Too under our control, we don't have permission. Ask somebody to go look at it, we don't have to go through the city board, nothing else. It needs to be separate.
Where would this, uh, where would, if we get a store place where we can keep parts for the water district?
Like a warehouse?
Yeah, like a little warehouse thing or whatever, but we, like, it's kinda what he's saying, getting a little storage building to be the warehouse, keep parts.
But when we picked up the finances, I was thinking rent it on. But the next part is, where do we put it? We own no land. Then we put it at the wellhouse, that's the only land we own.
Yeah, two concrete wellhouses not doing anything.
Yes, but there's chemical and water there, you can't store paperwork with that. Now, the parts, it can store, but I vote against putting paperwork where it can be grown by water. Or chemical.
I didn't go, there's water, chemical in the two by the road, they don't do nothing, there're no wells in them or nothing.
I don't have key to get in them, you gotta break into them, and it's full of rats and everything, from what I know, I mean, I'm open to it, but. Everybody needs to go look and see if that's.
The rats would eat everything down there.
It was just kinda ripped apart and left out home.
Yeah, they have to be in safe boxes or something like.
I mean, there's already snakes and rat nests down there anyway, you don't wanna put paperwork down there.
I motion we, we table that process, along with everything else, we find out or get an idea of how much room we're gonna need. And then where we can.
And figure out our finances, what we can do.
Yeah, yeah.
A couple of comments before we vote, that's okay.
Okay.
Uh, the USDA, our parent organization, has what's called a community facilities grant. Um, it is very broad in its scope, a, it could purchase a new utility building, a new shop, land to put it on. Um, and that's, that's what the USDA grants are there for. So if a piece of land in the long term, long term solution, uh, a USDA, I'm sorry, a USDA grant could likely be obtained. You guys are highly eligible for those. Uh, to buy a piece of land, a, an office with secure storage and a facility to store the truck in, or any kinda utility equipment you may purchase in the future. Uh, in the short term, I don't have a great answer, I, I know, a gun safe came to mind, or, but I'm not sure where it would be housed, so that, that's a challenge.
Well, it could get a fire, I don't know about water.
Uh, right, I'm, I'm not sure, yeah.
I wanna get this stuff out of my house.
They're like five thousand dollars.
I don't, I don't like it being in my house.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
I don't feel comfortable with that, and it's a space issue also. It's taking up all the space in my living room, there's two heaters in there.
Is this all the stuff that's gotta be in the, in the warehouse?
No, 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 this is everyday usage.
This is everyday use of stuff and.
We're talking about.
I don't even have a desk. I don't have a desk to put a computer and a printer and all that, I'm not set up for this.
This storage house that we maybe can get a grant for, could have like an office in front of.
Yeah.
That's what you said.
How long will it take us to find out about grants, where we get paperwork at?
Um, uh, do we know if we're current on audits, that's usually the biggest toll.
Well, we don't know that.
Okay, not sure yet.
We don't know the finances, we don't know the whole.
I have seen money move quickly, uh, and slowly, depending on the community. Uh, I'm working with one community near Stillwater, that, uh, they're behind on their audits, and it may take five to eight years. Uh, some communities that have all their ducks in a row, manage it in two to three. So, so this is a, a medium to long range solution. Uh, I don't know if a bank would offer some sort of safety deposit box in a temporary for some storage, I, I don't know if they have something of the size you're looking for.
Well, may I make a suggestion? I suggest that, I mean, surely we can afford thirty to fifty dollars a month storage, uh, to rent a storage building.
Yep.
And securely, uh, put our stuff in it until we can decide if we can get that grant or something. It's not in anybody's way, it's in a safe place, and we have our.
Have to find the land to put it on.
I think she's talking.
No, rent a storage.
Yeah, at Lindsay.
Yes, so at Lindsay, and there, a small one is like thirty to forty dollars, maybe one's fifty. And then the paperwork's safe and.
I agree, except, I would like to find out how somebody could donate land, a contract for X amount of years, whatever. For it to sit there, till we can move forward with buying land.
I understand that.
Because then we can have an office there too, and electricity.
But what I'm saying, for right now, a quick fix to get this stuff out of everybody's way, and we know that it is secure. And if we can obtain it, if we need it, it should be stored in a unit for now.
Listen to what she said, she's talking about everyday office use.
Well, that's just part of the job.
Well, I'm sorry.
I don't have office space in my house.
I didn't have it either, I had it all over my table, all over my house. I even had all the other boxes, but you know, I'm just saying.
I understand that, but for the same amount of money, if we can come to treatment. Somebody can donate a piece of land for so long, give us time to get.
Lindsay or Chickasha, that's where we're gonna have to get temporary quick space.
A contract against the landlord and the water company, that it can sit there for X amount of time. And there could be an office in it and storage. That's all I'm asking, cause it cures both problems.
I understand that, but I'm saying until we can figure something out, I think that it should be moved to a storage unit, but that's all I got to say.
Hey, good idea.
I would say pursue both, uh, research.
Me and you've talked about it, we don't know how to pursue it.
Right, research land, uh, the grant application, I'm happy to forward over to you guys, and we can, you know, get that process started. Um, so pursue, see if anyone's got land, see if, uh, check prices, see what kinda dollar marks we're looking for. And then also, in the, in the meantime, look into prices on a secure storage facility for these documents. Don't have a great answer on the office right now, um, but, uh, something to keep note of and, and look at moving forward, that office space will need to be included in a grant.
But is that something, if we get a lawyer, is that something that he could write up, agreement, whatever? Is that what we need to do, or who do we need to help us write up what we need?
Once you obtain legal counsel, I would direct that question that way, I, I would assume they would have some resources, but, um, I, I don't.
Well, I know it has to be legal, where if I gave them my land, I can't come back, tell them, no, get off my land.
Right, yes.
There needs to be legal activity involved in all this.
Agreed. Wouldn't that, uh, be a cooperative agreement with the town council? Their space behind their barn to place a, a portal unit for.
I don't know.
A year or two, but it would be worth approaching the town council.
I agree.
That was one of the deals to do, but.
Right.
I don't know if incorporating the two together has a conflict or not, I don't know that.
No, we don't have to incorporate the two entities.
No, but when you're, we're using their property, we do. There still needs to be agreement between the town and the lawyer.
Yeah, it has to be an agreement, maybe even like a, a short term lease or a medium term lease or something like that.
And it has to be brought to the people and then say, okay, we can do that.
Yeah, that'd have to be brought before the board went that vote on it.
Yeah, I, uh, I submitted an agenda request to Rachel about that very thing, so they can put it on a paper agenda. And discuss it amongst the board.
Well, that should've been discussed among this board before you took procedure to go there.
It's not a budget yet.
Well, that's what I'm learning, is I'm going with procedures.
You're permitted to gather information and, and then bring a proposal together. In fact, that's what I'd suggest doing with this particular resolution, is gather more information and revisit the issue, once you've done some more research and got some quotes. Uh, I think that would be my next step on this item.
I would like to talk about something else, there's questions about this phone, me having it, why I've got it, you know why I'm doing it? Anything I touch, it's logged on this phone with a prop, meters, everything I'm doing right now.
We're a brand new board, uh, some of the nuances are gonna have to be referenced, to get your bylaws consulted on with your lawyer. If it's in one or the other, or the other board member's possession right now, that doesn't terribly concern me. That will be ironed out as you get more training and legal counsel. I'm, I'm not super worried about some of the, the small nuances, as long as in broad terms, we're moving forward towards effective management, transparency, uh, effective water operations. I'm not, I'm not too worried about the phone today, um.
If she is, if she ever gets some meter papers.
We can ask the lawyer about that later.
They're going to, to Cody, he's supposed to read them later.
So do you want to table item twelve also? The cooperative agreement.
We can do it right now, if I table.
Second.
Roque, Cheryl?
Aye.
Jamie?
Yes.
Very yes, special passes, out of this table. Item thirteen, special guest speaker Travis Henry, circuit writer from the Oklahoma Rural Water Association. Travis, do you have anything else to add?
Um, thank you guys so much for your time, uh.
Thank you.
We.
Yes, thank you.
RWA is, as I mentioned to, to a few of you, we are a, uh, a contractor under the US Department of Agriculture. We handle the field technical operations for that entity. Uh, we have a heart for rural America, good water in rural America, uh, we've got connections to a lot of grants, uh, which I hope Bradley can be the recipient of many of them. Uh, thank you so much for your time, and, uh, I'd be happy, I've got cards, I have my cell phone number on there is three sixty-five twenty-four seven. If there's a water question, please give me a holler, and I'm happy to give a card to anyone interested. Uh, thank you so much for your time, everybody, I appreciate it, thank you for.
Do we need to do some paperwork before we adjourn?
Why, ask another question.
You what?
Did we ever establish if you guys were gonna read the meters? I, if I missed, if you said, I missed it.
Yes.
Okay.
But we couldn't do that, because we wasn't allowed to meet and get the paperwork.
Okay, I understand now, okay, I missed that.
I was told this had to take progress before we move forward in any way, shape or form.
Alright.
Cause we, we was elected board, but it wasn't safe.
Well, I don't always grasp everything, so that's the reason I asked.
And it was suggested to me at the first meeting, get acquainted, figure out who's who, before you proceed with anything. And that's all I was trying to do.
Did we do that, I think we did.
Pretty much, except, do we deal, deal with some of the paperwork at this meeting, cause we can't anywhere else?
Well, I guess we drag it out.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just asking the question.
In the interim, we have a acting secretary treasurer, we have an acting operator, you guys can conduct business. Um, it, uh, the reading of the meters can occur as normal. It is noteworthy that by state statute, meters may be averaged two months out of every twelve. So it's possible that because there was some, uh, challenges in the administrative side. Perhaps there will be either a minimum charge or a, an average balance charge this first month or two. Again, while the board gets everything in hand, hires some new folks even. Uh, I understand the clerk position is one that you guys would be advertising for. Um, so that, that option is out there, but I wouldn't be overly concerned with the meters. Uh, it, it may either be a minimum balance or an average balance, that, that would be, that, that's a tool that's built into water operations for times like this.
Well, I choose to do the minimum at this time, for the first reading at least, until we get our hands on what we need to do.
Uh, either structure would be fine from DQ's perspective or RWA's perspective, whichever way y'all choose would be, uh, would be ethical and, and a tool in your toolbox to use.
Well, tomorrow, or the first, is when they mail the bill. We don't have time to do all the readings and do all that, I don't think.
This, this would be the time for feedback also, if, if one of the other board members, you know, has a different plan or different idea, that this would be the time. This, this would be the time for feedback also, if, if one of the other board members, you know, has a different plan or different idea, that this would be the time to, to speak it, if, uh, if some other proposal would be, uh, set forward for that.
We are rushed to get this meter reading done, we don't have really time to do it thoroughly. I vote that we put a minimum this month, and no repercussion against the next reading, we go off the readings and go forward with it, and see the, if it was undercharged, overcharged, whatever on the minimum.
So, you're talking about, um, payment forgiveness?
I'm talking about, we start with a minimum now, we get readings, next month, we apply bill. I don't know how it's really to do it. Cause worse, we don't have the time.
Well, pro-rating, uh, you pretty much duplicate last month's bills, and you apply the same charge to the next month, month's bill. That's what pro-rating is, and that's what I've already done up on the computer, I've done all the spreadsheets.
You can't do that on one month.
Huh?
You can't do that on one month.
Do you have the original, do you have, do you have last month's readings?
Not pro-rating.
You gotta go back.
Yeah, do you have last month's readings?
Yes. Everybody's freaking out. Um, I do have. I do have last month's.
I think they should do it.
You mean last month is in December?
Yes.
That reading at my house was wrong.
That's why I was gonna say.
Cause I had to get a brand-new meter, and I'm not paying it.
That's what I was fixing to say.
I already paid four hundred dollars in the month of December, I'm not doing it again.
There's too many people calling that the meter reading wasn't right, I don't know.
And people's meters wasn't red.
A lot of the meters were reading way more than they were.
Yes, we do a minimum this month.
Yeah.
And then next month, they'll read it, but it'll be a minimum, again, two months in a row.
Yes.
And then the following month will be a, a.
It's starting over, yeah, from ground up.
Minimum, minimum.
Exactly.
And that way you can get a true reading.
And you know why I wanna do that? We need time to change up the meters, cause the one I shut off today for, uh, Pope, I can't read it.
And if someone had a crazy bill last month, they shouldn't be charged the crazy bill again this month, no.
The, uh, I see no problem with two minimums.
I can show you a picture of the one I shut off today, and maybe you can read it, I can't.
Well, just put in your motion and let them move.
I put in a motion to have a minimum.
Okay, so sixty-four dollars for everybody straight across the board, just a flat rate?
A minimum rate.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll break billing for one month or two months.
Where is it?
How about we put it, we tried this month, if we can pull it out of our feather somehow to get next month kinda done.
I might lose a little bit of money.
Just leave it open, we may have two to the right side, both months and the first one.
And it needs just a clean slot.
And then you all can examine in a month's time.
Cause we only got two for the whole year, and if we can both come back to back, we lost, so we can't look at it next year.
And then, if y'all go in and read meters, y'all can start building towards the accurate reading next month.
But that's the only way, otherwise you're not gonna have an accurate reading.
Right, agreed.
You have to do a minimum, a minimum, and then an accurate. You have to read it the second month, you have to go ahead and give the minimum this month, give the minimum next month, but read it the next month, you'll read it again, and that's what you're building.
Can't read it halfway through the month? One time, like, give half a bill, instead of reading it on the twenty-fifth, read it sometime this next week? And just build that part?
Well, if we can, fast enough, it can count for this minimum, but we can start with a justified bill next month. Even though part of the month's gone, it was read the twenty-fifth, we lose some days, I'm gonna take a loss to get it started, however we have to.
I don't have a problem with either playing a minimum, a minimum, or a minimum and a partial, uh, either, either one I think could work, um, but that, that's up to y'all, yeah, I mean.
Well, let me ask you this, to understand it completely, if we do a minimum back-to-back, do we lose that ten months out of the year read? You know, we only allow to not, not read or do the minimum two months, pro-rate, whatever.
Correct, you, you may.
I need to understand it, that we use both months together, we lost till next year.
Correct.
Yeah, it's only February, we don't wanna do that.
So, the remainder, the, the remainder of twenty-five.
What if something happens, anyway, can, you don't never know.
You have to have an accurate reading, and that's all.
It will be accurate when you reread it.
Is it meter read, is, is it, but does the law say meter read or charge? Cause if you get the me, the new meter read next month, it's the worst, it would only be one month if you didn't read it.
It only takes two hours to read the meters, we can pull together and read it before the first, we put a minimum together, we take the reading we got here, it's a few days over, and go forward next month with a regular reading.
A few days over, though, that, that bites people in the butt, cause we, that few days may put them over the, over their minimum.
Or you can just solve it and let them read the meters right now.
Well, Charles, it don't, because yours was read the twenty-fifth, we're gonna take a reading in the thirtieth, you gained, you didn't lose.
Okay.
Yeah, you're cutting days off.
We're cutting days off the reading, we're giving you some water, and I'm good with that, to go forward.
Yeah.
That's my personal opinion, if we can pull it off and read them for the first, for the bill date, it can count as this month's reading, where next month, we can read them and justify it.
You don't, you don't lose your cap, you don't lose your.
But also, if we can't get the unreadable meters done, we charge the minimum, if we can't read the meters.
She reads them.
I understand that, then give your bills, then give your math, max your numbers.
The one I done today is scratched up, so.
Do yourself.
I'm gonna have my numbers on it.
And it's turned backwards too.
Tonight, you could vote for a minimal charge this month, and then.
That's what you need to do next thing.
It wouldn't hurt to go read it, uh, so you start together then.
I have some of them read, cause that don't matter, that would just be kicking around or something, whatever, I would do. But we need to dedicate a day and talk, and don't take that off. And then they're all read on the same day, they're read on, well, you gave them the day more than me.
From the, from the perspective of the board of the age, there's not a right or wrong among these options, this is just how y'all want to strategically approach it, both as a community and as a board. Uh, however y'all would like to do this, that, that's purely up to you guys.
Well, the next meeting ain't that far off, if we try this and fail, we can approach it at the next meeting. But I'd like to approach to get the meters, the reading done this month, where we have something to go by with next month, the twenty-fifth of next month, we have something to go by.
I don't have any issue with that approach.
I mean, even if they don't get it read till the third, I mean, like he said, you're dating days, you're not losing days, but then we'll be actually ready with accurate numbers to bill next month.
Yeah, your schedule's set up when they're gonna be read.
Well, if it don't work, at the next board meeting, we say we done away with that. And that's why I agree, we failed, that's, that's the way, the well, that's the option.
I don't know.
Y'all agree or?
I'm gonna snowshell, cause we have three votes.
I mean, we gotta start somewhere.
We have done, we waited, that one, I mean, like, eleven days, probably. A lot of these hosts.
Now, we're just starting, uh, inaccurate readings, jargon.
It's a fucking, you can't, like, get out of that one, the people, you know, live, so like, I don't remember. We've had some weird shit happen where you.
I know a lot of it.
There was, uh, a two thousand reading and a one thousand reading, and she had it down for thirty-six thousand gallons.
Well, that we're gonna do, we're gonna do a minimum charge this month, everywhere it will be a minimum charge.
Is I can set it and test it.
Next month, if we can pull it off, it'll be a regular. Everything goes in our place, that means we're gonna be.
Back forth, back forth, back and forth.
But the part, I don't know. I don't know if we can replace.
No matter who does water, what is the best. Don't matter who does.
Yes, but do we have the funding bill, we've got three meters in our possession.
She, you know.
That's what I'm saying.
She started out the same way, that nasty shit on there.
Can you read that?
You know, just like, you know, she didn't like me.
I shut it off today, she told me, told me to turn it off and get it read.
There is a law, but what I says.
It's upside down too.
When you're legally on the board, you can lunch, or talk crap about someone else on the board, or mash each other. It's, it's still at least stayed on the board, and I'm gonna study more into it, you know, why not, it's gotta be.
Depending towards the accurate location, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the tracking on it.
You can go on the internet, it don't matter, a little board like this, and tell the board, you can't do that.
I can't lie where I was.
Now, if you're talking to somebody, you, you can say what you want to.
Chemical today, this tells.
But you can't between each other, and how can you keep doing that, and be able to get along and work and do this? Cause you said, none of me judge one, kids like saying, you know, just like her daughter, my daughter, and all that other stuff.
And here's my deal.
Well, you know, on a different one, she wasn't on the board three to me, but it was still.
I'm a meter reader.
But they're doing the same thing.
I would like, we've already got a count.
But if everybody keeps doing the same thing, like that.
Nobody can say you didn't read my meter.
I read it.
I would like to get that away, it's down on the computer.
Too stupid to get wrong yet.
I think that's very important, to just take the argument out.
It is, it's like, it's like watching kindergarten. You wanna mallow some color and make a crayon tell them.
And all of that, you can go back and track back to the meters, we hire a new meter reader or operator, whatever, we can hand you the phone, you can find those, the meters again.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Can we say we're, thank y'all for coming?
I don't know, I don't think they're many.
They're already taking off. No, we have to officially adjourn the meeting. Okay, okay, I might come back and adjourn.
Well, I ask if there's paperwork we need to find to go forward or not. Cause we can't do it again till next month, is there something we need to look into now, paperwork wise? I just ask you. I demand nothing else, I, I just, I don't wanna leave that loophole, we can hold it right now.
As training business, we'll get there.
Well, either, either the law is that, well, it'll be the tenth before we can ever do it again, we're gonna run in the blind? Well, why not do it now, when we're legal to look into the finances and understand where we're at?
That's important.
Or the paperwork we need to proceed on. That's all of that.
It's like, who's the operator that paycheck needs to change?
Oh, I see.
Cause there's a big, yeah, but it's too, it's too big.
I understand.
And then Travis, get a little bit of paperwork, and then I haven't looked no more. That's what I'm saying.
The, uh, is it Coulter, am I pronouncing it the same way? If Coulter is interested in, you know, considering. Activity, I'd say, we're checking one for a sign.
Get that up to the.
Part that we need to go forward. Which can't read, again, until the meeting. If we're not allowed, don't read it outside of meeting.
So, I do know y'all are allowed to, Sam, um, I'd like this on the agenda, back and forth, and you're also allowed to meet and discuss, and not discuss city business, but you may, like, if you.
Yeah, but that's what I'm asking, if there's something we need to look at, the city, at this point, will we adjourn or not? That's what I'm asking, if there's something we need.
I'd let the, the court, uh, settle that, uh, for now, and y'all gonna get it, what, ten days?
Is that we're gonna drag out the finances and then go from there?
The secretary should have some idea of what to do.
Coulter basically quit. His mother brought his key, his truck, parked out. So, is it not up to the board and the people, if they want him back?